Like all this village of Green Hills Council Work Session for January fifteenth, two thousand thirteen to order. Wendy Clark, call the roll please.
Adams?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Halter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Walterman?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
All right. Looks like we've got maybe developments. Let's start with seventy-fifth anniversary.
Yes. I'd like to establish a budget for the activities throughout the year. Allotting, you know, we've done some calculating, but it there's quite a few things going on. And I think that Yvonne's suggestion of allotting six thousand dollars or five hundred a month would be reasonable. I did lower since we talked after I started to find out how many glasses and pins and things we'd have to sell. I was hoping that, you know, we could have on the revenue side, you know, raise fifteen hundred dollars, I think is more tangible than originally. We were talking about twenty-five hundred. We have to start selling like golf carts and stuff with a logo on it. But I'd like to work with that and do our best to stay within that. And where we can, like on the dinner, the dinner dance, we're tracking to break even at this point. So, and that's, we'll probably hopefully do better than that if we sell some of those, some of the area that we have. But I think we need some cash for some of these events. Community Day at the pool and Chili Cook-Off. I know that there's a couple of things that I think will come out of other budgets, like other areas like the banners for the street. You know, getting the seventy-fifth banners up there. We thought that that could come out of, what was it?
Pray the inns and buildings.
Yeah. That's open for discussion and thoughts and recommendations.
Boy, it's, you know, person seems pretty reasonable. I, I think. You know, that this seems good. You planning on selling flags at all?
Yeah, that's, we're gonna.
You could do well with flags on the sixty-fifth.
Yeah. We, in fact, I talked to Jim Miller. We're have, on June twelfth, we have a, he's lining the music up so that it'll go hand in hand with us rolling out the flag at that point. We'll be introducing different things throughout the year. Not everything's gonna be at the dance as far as what can be purchased. I also had someone email me and, you know, really strongly liked the idea of having t-shirts. I think that's, that's fine, the job, as you know, with t-shirts are minimum order quantity sometimes and the sizes and, you know. But, you know, if, if the strong, you know, if there's strong feelings that way, we'll just, we'll definitely go with the t-shirts as well.
I can help you with that. I've got a real good connection with t-shirts, very inexpensive.
Good. Yeah, any, any resources, I, you know, because there's, with the internet, there's those resources. But it's nice if it's, I think if it's a trusted resource that we know it's, you know, competitively priced.
They're competitive as well. It's actually a nonprofit as well.
Oh, good.
But they'll do.
Lower quantity.
They'll do quality of one.
Okay.
And you can reorder them as you need it so we don't have stockpile.
Wow, that's nice.
Yeah.
Because some places that isn't.
About, I'm gonna say three years ago, there was a t-shirt done.
Mm-hmm. There's still one sale at the post office. Are you?
I didn't know if there was any supply. I didn't think there was any supply left of them.
Yeah. Yeah, no, they're on, you can go to the post office and there's still some there.
Oh, okay. Did not realize that. So, Yvonne, where we plan to, what part of the budget is out of the general fund?
Um, yeah, general fund, I thought maybe under legislative, supplies and materials, contractual or something. So that kind of device.
Well, we, I mean, we did talk about like some of these events, you know, could maybe recreation and stuff. And we just thought it was cleaner to keep it in the general fund.
Do, do we need another line item number?
Oh, I think we'll add mine. Yeah, so I see now I can stick that into the appropriation and we do final appropriation.
And we're gonna function up a P O system so that, you know, it's, you're reviewing what's being spent before you.
Not because, this is for your protection, not because I think that anything other than the highest level of fidelity. But handling cash and checks and stuff like that, for your own protection, you need to have something in place where, you know, you're not walking. Honestly, I hate walking home with a cash box the night of, of light up Green Hills. And it's, you know, it's, it's not a big sum of money, but I don't want anyone ever to say, wow, you took twenty-five bucks out of there or something. To buy pizza on the way home or something. So, just make sure that you got some procedures in place.
What we're doing right now for the ticket sales.
I know they're happening here.
Here in the post office. And we have a money box at the post office. I have a tally sheet of all the ticket numbers that they're supposed to record and.
Receipt books.
And receipt books.
We assign specific receipt books to the function.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but I mean, we want to count for every penny and feel good about every penny that we're, that we're spending. After I started to see how many wine glasses and pins and stuff, I'm like, wow, I would have liked to say, oh, we're gonna make three thousand dollars and, you know, memorabilia, but I, it's too big of a question mark at this point.
So, do you need, do you need this sick, the five hundred a month or the six thousand for the year for seed money to make purchases in the hopes of recouping some of it, most of it, any of it?
Well, like for the dinner, we're working, we know what our food cost is, we know, right now, we've allotted a certain amount for a band and we're gonna try to firm that up this week and, and.
So, you know, you, you have a rough idea of break even for number of people, right?
Right, yes. Yeah, and also we have up till seven days before to finalize our numbers. That's one thing, I guess if I probably had to do it over again, probably would have had maybe a higher ticket price kick in at a certain point just to get the flow early on and not have people wait till last minute. But, but, you know, seven days is still a pretty good figure. If we don't have a good idea by then what the numbers are.
What's your break even on the gestures?
Well, we worked off two hundred people. And, but you're, you're talking about the financial figure, I'll have to look it up. But it's eighteen ninety-five for, well, actually it's more than that for the food, because, but, you know, we, I think it was, right now, thirty-two dollars is what we figured and, not thirty-two, what is it?
Thirty.
No, thirty, it was twenty-eight. It was two dollars short of where we were. Trying to think what else. The band, we had a council member graciously paid for, there's a guitarist during cocktail hour. So, it was food and door prizes was another thing, ticket printing and stuff. But I should know that.
No, 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 no. I'm quite confident you have this under control.
Yeah, well, it's, it's nice, I think what's nice about the dinner and the dance is that it's a great kickoff event for setting the tone and getting our system down for these other events. We do have some other things that are gonna be challenged from another front, which would be the Chili Cook-Off because it's new. But as far as those other events that we're, we're doing things, we're coupling up with the Tree City USA piece and, you know, and that kind of thing. So, and we also wanna get, and that thing is get the calendar of the seventy-fifth events up on the website. But, I don't know. It's a, all I could say is, it's a lot. It's a lot.
No one argues.
And there's.
He's doing a good job.
You know, well, and I'm.
It's a crew.
It is a crew. It is a good crew and we're, you know, I can't think, we're meeting again on Thursday night and, and, you know, getting really strong support, Terry from the arena and Steve from the post office. I mean, there's just a lot of people, Neil, Denise, there's just a whole bunch of people that are gonna be, need to be thanked in the process.
Mr. Halter, on the door prices, are you paying also for that or are they gifts or how are you handling that?
Yes.
Yes, to both, okay.
It's both.
Both, okay.
Yeah. It's a little bit of both. But again, we're, I'm fortunate that my wife used to work at Jan Eller's and I bought two nice glass vases and she knew when I walked in the door, we're gonna try to get the logo hopefully etched on there. So, it's a combination of volunteer work and, you know, different things. But we're, we're in a good place as far as that goes. What I really, in fact, I thought about doing is handing everybody six or eight tickets up here and saying, I don't care, how you sell them? Get out there and sell them.
And I really feel you should.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Because it gets us involved as well.
Wow.
I know you already did yours, right?
You're good, big way.
You're good. So, I, the thing I would like to do is just encourage people to get the word out and we're gonna keep putting things in the Hilltop and, and, you know, do what we can from a promotion standpoint. But there, you know, nothing beats word of mouth of saying, hey, great event, get out there, really good food. I think we're gonna have a real good band and they're working with us as well. In hopes that we have the summer concert series and there's a lot of history with Jim Miller and stuff. So, it'll be a really good event. And the other thing I'd like to mention too is, because I get various input and I appreciate it, but it's like, oh, somebody wants rock and roll and somebody wants. This event is, and it probably would have set this tone probably a little bit earlier. I think this is a celebration, a great kickoff event. It's also an appreciation for some of the people that have been here for many years. And, and we'll have our opportunity to, you know, hit the beach and play the Beach Boy, Beach Boy music and everything else at the Community Day at the pool, for example. So, this, we're trying to keep consistent with what it's about, set the tone. It'll, it'll be fun, I guarantee it, no matter what. But, you know, it's got a certain character that we're trying to establish on, on this. And then other events are gonna be different and appeal to somebody totally different.
And you gotta dress the part too, right?
Uh, which part?
I think they're usually.
Yeah. That's always the questions I forgot to ask you. What is the attire for it? Is it?
Um, I don't think we're gonna say mandatory attire at this point. I know we haven't really, we talked.
You have, you have to wear clothes.
Attire is mandatory.
You can wear a tire.
Yeah.
Well, I had the people wondering, I mean, is it gonna be tie or are they gonna come in jeans?
Well, it was kinda interesting because as we were setting the tone, there's some people going, wow, this looks like it might be pretty formal. I, I would recommend it be at least nice casual. I don't see it as a jeans type event, but no means are we, if somebody wants to show up in jeans.
Business casual or better.
Thank you very much. I should put that on the website maybe. But any other thoughts or questions on?
Are you gonna have, are you planning on having, you talked about t-shirts and flags and that.
Right.
But none of that'll be available at the dance. It'd be nice to have like a table of stuff where you can kinda jumpstart your funding.
You can order it.
Yeah, well, actually, ordering's an interesting idea. I like that idea because at least we can get a feel for how many people want what, if it's available. But the thought right now were glasses that would be etched with the logo on it, that those would be available. We talked about some even, well, we don't wanna give away some of our.
You know, when Peggy, she does those twelve inch diameter square things with a pine ear on it, she paints it.
Yeah, yeah.
Put them for the gardens and she would take orders and she got like twenty-two orders just by having one sitting out.
Yeah.
So, it's, you know, I think orders might be a good thing if we can actually show what's there and then how we've got this.
I could have a, I don't know if you want it there for the, for the tongue you're setting, but I could have the t-shirt there in time for sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna hold a little bit on the t-shirt just because of what it is. All right, Terry, what other, and you guys, what other things? We talked about the wine glasses. We, we have the chrome conservatory, a really nice pen and we're trying to do, have some pens, magnets was another possibility. You know, so we're keeping it in a smaller bandwidth, but it wouldn't hurt to say, you know, go ahead and, not maybe even just order, but also vote for some other things that you might like to see.
Suggestions.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
But.
With a couple of things where they gave away these little cheap penometers you put on your bill. They're pretty cheap. It's gotta be.
Yeah, and again, that might, you know, I keep thinking of the Community Day at the pool.
As opposed to glasses that encourage drinking. And fortune. As opposed to the glasses that encourage drinking.
Well, we actually were looking at a hybrid, that it could be an iced tea, beer or wine.
Come on.
But no, please send me any suggestions. Also, get the word out in, in getting your tickets, get them early because I think they're gonna go really fast. I'm, I'm looking forward to the day to sit up here and say, there have gone, do you have your tickets yet?
Jeff, if you run into some difficulties or something for door prices, let me know.
Okay.
Anything else for the seventy-fifth?
I, this one.
All right. Next item, the American Legion cross season stuff.
Um, I have a sample actually from a, from the community. I just wanted you to kinda see what a cross season could potentially look like. Again, where we are on this discussion is finding some way to help the American Legion make their facility be a little bit more marketable since they are anxious to try to sell it and the plugging is the big hitch for them. People want to look at it, there's no parking actually dedicated to their facility. So, I had a couple of thoughts and if you have any others, please let me know. And one of which, what is, is a cross season. I'm gonna, you guys have seen this map before, but I went ahead and made some more copies so you can be looking at it fresh tonight where it shows the items that are slashed are properties owned by the American Legion and the ones that are not are owned by the village. And you see we have, to the right of the American Legion building, the slash mark up there, that is the driveway between the American Legion and the Mark Hutter House, which actually they own. So, we would benefit by having that be a cross season, especially in the event the ownership would that would ever change. We would have guaranteed use of that to continue on entry.
Access to our municipal building.
Potentially, yes, yes. So, um, you know, it's, it's one option when, if you think this is something we might wanna consider. I would certainly want Jeff Forbes to work with us a little bit more. But again, I, I'm showing you just an example. It's, you know, it's intended for the particular access, parking and circulation for all of the parcels. Now, how the maintenance works on it, whoever actually owns that piece is responsible for maintaining that piece. And if, and if damage is caused by the other party, we, the village would have the ability to enforce it and can go the route of even assessing their taxes if we ever chose to, you know, be the American Legion or whoever would own that facility. So, we would have some enforcement of the pauses of this. This will be a recorded document, so that carries some strength.
And what's typically the, I'm sorry, what's typically the term of the easement? Is it imper附tivity?
Yes. I don't know, I guess I would give the.
Well, it says this one's permanent and perpetual.
Right, I'm, I'm playing with the common of one split. I can ask Jeff if there was a time or if one could be placed on, if I could know. If I could know.
Um, so that's one thing, I guess I would like the thoughts on. And then the other item that I did want to throw out tonight is a, just a thought. And if you look at the, the issue of the green belts, if we want to attempt to get possession of that, I don't know if they'd be open to it. I've not thrown this out yet. But if you see the piece that, where their bicentennial bell tower is located, is actually a piece that we own. But it's contiguous to their building. I don't know if they would ever consider switching, you know, trading. We have to do some surveying because right now that's part of another piece, but that might be one option.
What trade?
If they're interested. Yeah, this piece, which actually is zone, it is not zone, this is zone red. I, it could potentially be of some value, I don't know.
So, which one?
Take that and trade the bell tower.
Right.
Piece right there.
Trading with.
Trade for all this.
Yeah.
Maybe, not likely, although it is zone different, they could potentially do something with it that they can't do anything with this property.
Is there an advantage or disadvantage to us having a green belt?
Um, you know, maybe just to calm anybody's fears, it could potentially be developed.
Well, I think what you brought up earlier, the fact that it makes what they have property wise.
More substantial.
More marketable.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that, that little piece is right next to it.
It's a funny fragment.
Yeah, well, and that's, I mean, we're actually cutting the grass there. It's a little bizarre configuration. Don't know whether it ever happened, but I could see if they would have an interest in doing that. And I, I don't think anybody else has any other ideas to be explored with them.
I'd like the idea if that made sense, if they were doing the whole idea of us taking the awkward piece that really belongs more with the American Legion and switching.
You know, it might be a good idea, you're talking to him about this cross season, to do it, this at the same time.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I agree.
See what they, see what they say? Sounds like the guy in district.
Just go back, I have two, two questions, well, two, two questions that I need to ask. One is, I would like to see a sample of what it would look like, a document that would pass over the duty of, of the repairs if they have to do so. I would like to see a sample of that already being processed and being used and see how that's enforced. And number two, is there any way to work into that assurance that E M Ts and the, and the fire emergency vehicles will have an area there that will not be taken over, let's say, by lottery?
Yes. Oh, I think so, and I think how we wanna handle that is not include that in the piece.
Okay, because that's vital for them to be able to come in and out in that case of emergency. So, I would like to see another piece of that already being in use that Mr. Ford may be able to provide, seeing that already active in place and see if we can sustain that. Because I have found myself trying to come to the, to the building and it's kind of like, oh, no, I can't come in on Thursdays because I can't park anywhere and I'm not going to take an E M T spot to go and check my mailbox. It's between, I don't know, two o'clock and whatever. Yes, you just can't. And if there is a situation with a fire or life and death situation, we want to make sure that people have access in and out.
Is there a buffer around the building here? I see the road and I see the square that represents the American Legion building and then there's, looks like there's about a six foot buffer.
It's the sidewalk and front yard.
Well, I know the front, the front yard.
Probably the property line setbacks.
Well, it, on the right of that is the driveway.
Oh, okay.
That's currently marked entrance. On the left, it looks like there's a little, a little piece to the side of their building that runs down to the front. I don't know, but one time was that contemplated to be a drive or maybe at one time it was, I don't know.
I don't know.
But, um, yeah, a little sliver there on the other side too.
Not mine.
Okay.
All right, got everything you need?
I hope so.
Any questions regarding this?
Has anyone talked to Destiny, do you think, is there any interest in them working something out with the Legion and maybe pulling that space into, I mean, it's a different feel, it's a different type of a venue, you know, it could be a less expensive venue, that kind of thing. I don't, you think they, you know, it's being so close to Malloy's, I wonder if it'd be interesting to them to work something out with the Legion.
Um, no, I haven't, but I could talk to you though.
Where they could, you know, allow them to access their buildings, have some kind of agreement if they need it.
And you know, I, I know from time to time, we have Eagle Scouts who are looking for a project. I, I don't know if the magnitude, but they need help just painting their building. I don't know if that would make an Eagle Scout project or not.
Yeah, good, sure.
It has potential.
Even if it's a hardship.
The essence of the project is it has to show the Eagle, the potential Eagle Scouts leadership skills and it has to be something that is more or less of an, has some permanency or a model of nature to it.
Might be a project for the whole scout troop, the whole, all the Boy Scouts.
Okay.
Hey, can I ask a question? I, the bicentennial bill, I guess Green Hills put that there because it was our property.
Legion put it there.
We didn't?
Legion put it there.
Legion put it there.
On our property and I guess we allowed that then.
Yeah.
At the time.
Okay.
Nineteen seventy-six.
Yeah.
Politically unpopular to go against the Legion.
Yeah.
On the bicentennial.
Any more questions, comments?
Moving on.
Super. Okay. Next on that housing R S D, I've mentioned, I think, a couple of times in counseling that I'm working on a proposal and this would be for the acquisition, acquisition and rehabilitation of townhouses and apartments in Green Hills, Ohio. Just so you know, the draft that I used, I, I had Beth Solbarger, our historic consultant, take a look at it and give me some suggestions and more wording. This is clearly written for rehab according to the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation of historic structures. And it does not include our vacant land. It includes our units, scattered village-owned townhouses. Those are the ones where the village does not own every unit in a particular building, so I call them scattered. It includes the village-owned buildings with multiple townhouses where we own all of the units in the structure. And then we have the two one-bedroom apartment buildings. And as I work through this, um, a couple of things, I mentioned before about a community reinvestment area and that would permit some tax exemptions to encourage the rehabilitation. Another piece that Beth gave me that was very useful was on the, and I, I didn't make copies of this because I changed it along on a daily basis to not add to it. At any time you wanna see it, let me know and I, I will eventually get a document to you, but it's kind of a work in progress. So, she gave me financial incentive, information on tax credits from the federal level and the state level. And then the community reinvestment area would be another exemption offering some tax breaks on the value of the improvements that are made to the buildings. So, I still wanna pursue that and I may, I may suggest we just go ahead and put this out and be working on, working towards that because I hate to keep delaying that and that's gonna be a few months, several months process for us. So, that's one issue. Another issue is that in the, the map that I gave you, one of the things that's, has become obvious is that we need to mark the property lines in the green space prior to selling our housing units. When you look at some of them, look in the back and we have our green space and it's like, well, where does that start? Where does it end? And we wanna be sure to delineate that so there can be no question. And that's what I'm trying to show you here, in kind of a weird orangish color, our, our units. And you can see the ones that have green space that, above them, the ones in particular on Chalmers, the apartment buildings, the one on Cromwell, the one, the actual townhouses on Chalmers, those are all against public property. And, and all of our things have been surveyed, so I think all we're looking at here is, is for somebody to take those surveys and go out and mark the lines. Okay, but we already have them, everything I've seen so far has been surveyed at the time we purchased it. So, we should just be able to use those surveys and have somebody go out and mark those. Another good example, with Flanders, it was rather clear, we weren't dealing with multiple persons when we sold that one. The one on Falcon is not very clear, so that is definitely one we'll, we'll survey and mark clearly. And literally anywhere where you see some of our property against the green, that's what I'm trying to show for you here, are the ones that we'll go ahead and have marked so we know for sure where our own property lines are.
The, the red outline on that, what is that for any?
Um, I think at that point I was maybe just trying to show, I don't, never let.
Well, you colored it in the lines well.
Sorry, I think using multiple, multiple maps here for multiple things. I don't know, maybe those were ones that were listed. Those, those might have been ones that. I don't know, maybe those were ones that were listed, those, those might have been ones that, no, I don't know.
And am I correct that the ten through fourteen Cromwell, that unit sold, correct?
Yes, you're right, she marked silver in it.
Are they gonna run it out already too?
Yeah.
They are, are they?
They are, yeah.
They're ready?
No, there, there are a lot of people in there.
Oh, great, taxpayers, I guess. Good.
And the other piece, I will be doing appraisals on all of our items that we will be pursuing so we have a good, good sense of, of the value that we need there, so.
Who are you using to do that?
Um, we haven't decided yet, because that's a lot of appraisals, I'm gonna use a couple of people. Any questions on that for us?
Does anyone have anything else?
I got a couple of things, one, are we, is February ninth a firm date for the decree? Because if so, we need to get Frank on some planning.
Yes, because we actually need to make some decisions on Destiny and looking to be serving for economy breakfast and lunch and all square away.
You demand, okay. Zoning code, when are we gonna continue to tackle?
The, the twenty-nine, two weeks from tonight is the plan, so come prepared to zoning code.
The day when you said that at the meeting last week, I bought a plane ticket earlier that day, so I won't be here for the twenty-nine. But I think my input's been put in like eight times.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, you were, we were planning to make this part, so.
You must have a lot of, lot of legislation that.
No, no, there's no legislation, nice try, nice try.
I noticed in our packets that we got something that was addressed to Kathy Lyes, our clerk.
One of the coyotes?
Oh, yeah, I'm planning on attending. I'm gonna try to dispel the myth between coyotes and wolves and find out what's bad towards fiction. I've started researching already, just, I just want us to make a reasonable decision when it comes.
I know the police chief down at the park district, so. And then the last, I, we gotta find a date for finance committee. So I'll be with you.
Okay.
Pick a date, we're, we need to work on final appropriation.
Right.
We, I don't wanna meet sooner than when we have all the information available as to how we finished last year. And.
When is, when do we have that?
I think we're pretty much there.
Okay, yeah. And then we need to look at raises for some of our folks, I wanna talk about that in finance. We, we have a police officer, we're gonna get a raise to him in four years, coming up, he, last raise that this person got was in two thousand and nine and they're a satisfactorily performing employee, it's not for long time, ask somebody not to go without any increase.
I have a little comment, our grass cutting bids are out right now, I'll be back, that will refer us. We've bound her to your contractor at Service Tower.
That's already?
I know.
All right, so everybody plan on the twenty-ninth, bring your, any supporting documents upon, I guess being prepared to lead. We're on the discussion. Through it, you know what, that might be really useful if it's, if there's questions, we really need to get.
And maybe even Jeff.
This sorted out and.
Are we still doing, picking a couple of topics?
Well, I would like to power, I don't think there's a whole bunch of stuff left, I mean, it strikes me that there's about a half dozen items and it's like, you know, fence height, side yard, backyard, front yard, yeah, 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 yeah. And having the resources there and just powering through and coming to a consensus that we can bring to a vote finally, would, I think would be a, a great thing entirely. I'd like to get the, this finished.
And, but at one point we did talk about this being one of the topics at the retreat, is that still the plan or not?
They work what they can.
All right, no, I'm just trying to follow because I thought that that was.
I'd like to, I'd always really like to get it finished before then.
Okay.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, I gladly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, there's no objection, we stand adjourned.